Good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome folks back to the continued session from yesterday, December 7th, to our December 8th meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And with that, allow Flo to please call the role of establish a form.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Wednesday, December 14th at 9:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. When the chair opens public comments and calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. And please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your comment. And clerk staff will transfer all callers into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific agenda item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact us at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo.
You're welcome.
Anne Edwards, read these. Some Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its essence, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, we do, on our publishing agenda, we did allow for, as we do, for off-agenda comments. I have three speakers signed up. I'm going to, I want to be pretty clear about this, though. We did close public comment on the item that is under item two. So if the commenters will keep their comments to non-agenda items, I'm going to allow folks to speak, and I'm going to hold to the three minutes. So with that, then I'll go ahead and order they were handed to me. McKenzie, Courtney, and then Kian.
Thank you, Board, for the time.
Good morning.
Pulling it up. I'm just going to, I added some words to that first prayer I brought in a few weeks ago. Because today is not an "and/or" conversation, or an "and" and "both" conversation. If it was a "both" conversation, we would have been having it a long time ago. I know that love is all there is. It's in the air I breathe, the words I speak, and in every person I see. It's sitting in those seats. I mean, it's in all things, really. Love is in schools that foster our creative minds, and they don't have us saluting to long-dead and harmful white men or condition us as we prepare for exploitation. Instead, the classrooms are set up in circles because love knows that learning is not linear. The lessons are not just about how to read and write, but they teach us how to innovate and create instead of how to work to survive. Love is growing up with access to parks, to healthcare, to joy, to opportunity, to housing instability, to healthy food and community gardens with more than enough. One day, it looks like communal kitchens and pubs that don't look like us serving each other for money, but instead, we show up with our own stuff, some from those gardens, because love knows that we love to create for each other and eat and drink together. One day, it looks like care and education in our communities that aren't transactional and won't charge us as, charge us an insurance bill or have us living in student debt to become a doctor. Instead, it looks like that nonlinear learning that shares and fosters our ability to teach each other because love knows we love to care for one another. Love is access to love when we don't feel well or when we don't do something right. Love is there when we're tired or when those screws aren't tight. Love shows up the most when we don't do love. Love shows up the hardest in these moments because even love knows you wouldn't be able to know love or be love without knowing, or without knowing the feeling of or having the ability to hurt and hate. Love is investing in learning love, love of self, love of each other, love of the planet, love of our limitless potential, just as expansive as the limitless universe and its limitless love. Love is admitting when we're wrong because love will allow us to admit it without fear or shame, without fear of guilt or shame. Love is kind, love is patient, love is making decisions with intention. Love is putting our creative minds together to find solutions that are best for us and our children's futures. Love is investing in the love of us. Love does not isolate, love does not harm, love does not lock us up and throw away the key. Love is not poverty and crisis and trauma treated with jail cells and guns and guards. Love is showing up so hard that we don't need jail walls because love knows that love is built by education, healthy food, housing stability, access to choice and opportunity, resources, support for our mental health, and shows us how to experience all the things in healthy ways, from drugs to healthy relationships with ourselves and the world around us. Love is in neighborhoods, not just as events and parks and commons for us to hang out at together, but as centers that support us through all of the things that don't make us feel love. Love is transferred, I'm going to go 20 more seconds. Love is transportation to love. Love is universal access to the ways we can make sure that we see in the dark, keep ourselves warm, share information, and stay connected to each other and to love. Love is decision-making spaces big enough and accessible enough for all our voices, different able-bodied types, and our love. Love is not poverty, love is not austerity, love is not being stuck in a rat race chasing paper to survive and then punished for not being able to play by the rules when we make up our own or when we're simply too tired to keep going. Love is letting us rest. Love is fostering our ability to know what we need, how to have boundaries, and how to say no. Love is recognizing when things aren't love. Love is about the presence of all things, y'all, not its absence. Love is a verb, love is a doing word, love is abundance, love is care, and love is freedom. And with love like that, we don't need cages. I give thanks for love, y'all. I am in awe of love, I am in awe of the love that can even make these words and these ideas exist, and I am humbled to be just a piece of that love. And because I recognize the love in all of you, I am grateful for your love, too. Together, our love makes what love is true. And with that, I release these words to all of you and into the creative mind that has already said, "Love is all there is, and so it is." Amen.
Thank you, McKenzie. Okay, Courtney.
Good morning. Supervisor Natoli, I really want to respect that clear line you just drew, and that wasn't clear to me, but I hope you all did get a statement in your emails this morning, including a timeline for coming into legal compliance and meeting community needs and voting no against the jail expansion.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. All right, Kian.
Appreciate the time. Just a couple of things in terms to talking about resources and really just emphasizing that we, as a county, are not ones that are starving for resources. We are not limited when we have over $7.3 billion in a budget proposal, and over $650 million of that goes to the Sheriff's Department. I mentioned before how pay parity, pay equity between law enforcement and mental health and healthcare workers in general is vastly disproportionate. According to the county's own job portal, a behavioral health specialist is being offered between $41,000 to $50,000 annually as a starting salary. Mental health workers, licensed mental health workers, are being offered $58,000 to $70,000 annually. But a deputy sheriff, which is a continuously hiring position, and despite the fact that we have thousands of sheriffs here in the county, are being offered $83,000 to $112,000 annually as a starting salary. And on average, sheriff's deputies here in Sacramento County make no less than $101,000, on average. In fact, a lot of the sheriff's deputies include, are making, when total pay and benefits, more than $300,000. Not just the, like, the higher-ranked officers like captains and tenants, but even just deputies are making that much in their take-home, and they've been making that much for years. If we were even, if we were to, say, reduce, just decrease sheriff's funding by just 2% of that $651 million, about $13 million, we could support over 333 behavioral health peer specialists, or 267 mental health workers, or 200 social workers, or 200 health educators, or 333 EMTs, or 267 paramedics, or any equivalent combination. And if we were, cut the, if we reduced the salary or cut two sheriff deputies' positions to an amount of $202,000, we could afford five behavioral health peer specialists, or four mental health workers, or three social workers, or three health educators, or any other equivalent combination. But also, by, if we wanted to achieve pay parity with mental health workers and offer, say, a behavioral health peer specialist, or a mental health worker, a licensed mental health worker, or unlicensed, the same, like, the same amount as we, the starting salary of a deputy sheriff, we could actually afford 155 behavioral health peer specialists for just $13 million that we could hire those on. As we have a current shortage of mental health workers and behavioral health specialists here in the county, I think that actually would make, like, would make us competitive and actually help close that shortage if we were to offer them the same amount that we're offering to law enforcement who don't, who aren't actually addressing the, like, the current crisis-level problems that we have. They actually are making it worse. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Kian. Okay, I have one other off-agenda, Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. Good morning. Good morning, Corinne.
Good morning. So yesterday, I spoke in my capacity as chairperson for the Sacramento County Mental Health Board in regards to the item that you're considering. And I've been up here numerous times in the numerous different hats that I wear, right, as also president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, concerned constituent of District Two, and a community mental health advocate. Today, I really stand here just in my, without any hats on, and maybe that's why I'm feeling a little more anxious, because I'm going to get pretty vulnerable. I often get asked, "How do you have so much energy for all of the things you do?" I've been told about the plethora of emails that have been sent in over the years to all of you, and the countless hours each month that I volunteer for, on behalf of this county, for the Mental Health Board. I love Sacramento. I've been born and raised here, off of 24th Street between Fruit Ridge and 47th Avenue. And from the time I was born till the time I was 17, I probably lived in about 10 different rental houses. My family was housing insecure. My father had substance abuse issues as well as mental illness. Oftentimes, my father would be gone for long periods of time. I have a younger brother who experiences substance abuse issues still to this day, a younger brother who was a victim of crime when he was 15, riding his bike from the Joinin' Cube Billiards back to a rental house that we had on Encinal Avenue. I've been personally affected by the issues that I've dedicated my career to serving. How do I have so much energy to do all the stuff I'm doing? The answer is simple. I'm constantly energized and inspired by the people with whom I collaborate. I'm overwhelmingly grateful to be connected with such loving, intelligent, passionate, vulnerable, and brave humans who share the same values, beliefs, and commitment to data-driven solutions to promote the public good as I hold. I owe more money in student loans than I do on my mortgage and the home-in-the-pocket area because of how much I love mental health. I know, as a consumer, as a loved one, as an advocate, as a professional, I know that it's so important. We heard someone speak yesterday about, "We need ladders because there's people that want to climb." I have a six-and-a-half-year-old son. I was so blessed to be able to have him at age 39-years-old. And I have so much energy and passion for what I do because my son's soul is electricity. He energizes me, and I go hard to make sure that his future and the future of his friends, that he has now and that he will have, is prosperous, that it's healthy, and that it's kind. I didn't really come here with the intention to speak again, but I felt so moved. So thank you.
Thank you, Kian, for sharing. Okay, thanks to our speakers. And do we have any off-agendas on the phone?
We do not. Let me just see if anyone is IMing me about it. Nope, no, no public comments, and I'll close the queue now.
All right, very good. Okay. With that, again, thanks to our speakers. We're going to turn to item two. Have you called item, please? Or just re-note it? We kept it open, but if we could.
And just for the record, Supervisor Natoli, we have closed the public comments for item two on the phone.
Correct, we did that yesterday, yes.
Yes, I just want to say that on the record. And also, could I also announce that the agenda that was posted online last night was correct. It had the 9:30 start time, so there wasn't, there was an internal glitch for internal staff only. Item number two, report on population reduction efforts and request for direction on steps to address jail facility deficiencies for May's consent decree compliance.
Great. All right, I'm going to turn back to Anne, moving, kick us off this morning.
Well, I just want to thank Eric and Rick and others for their presentations and for the public comments received, and, yep, that's it for now.
All right, well, then, I'm going to bring you back to the board, and I see Supervisor Desmond has punched in. I just wanted to give a chance for any opening staff comments. So I think the intent would be here today to obviously try to get to some decision points, but to have the board ask questions, to talk certainly amongst ourselves, ask of staff, and then ultimately result in some direction going forward. And so we have folks who are here, and we've heard from a lot of folks. So with that, I see three of my four colleagues are already in the queue, so are primed and ready to go. So with that, I'll start with Supervisor Desmond, and Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Frost.
Are you going to talk about the voting?
Oh, well, yeah, when we got, yeah, well, and just, since Supervisor Serna just asked me, is that, again, as it relates to any motion we may make, we certainly have the ability, I think, as a board, in my experience over the years, to, you know, either bifurcate the action that may be taken, to give it in different pieces. And so I, again, I think the concern is expressed, me, Supervisor Serna, but I would concur that we have the ability to parse that out and to give direction, either along the lines of what's being recommended to it, to give additional direction relative to any of the items that were on the agenda yesterday or presented to us, and/or if there's some new ideas. I know I didn't sleep very well last night, and I have some thoughts, so hopefully that reflects, Supervisor Serna, that we have the ability as a board to, you know, it doesn't have to be an "all" or "nothing" as it's been portrayed. There's a lot at stake here in lots of different respects, and so I would certainly respect my colleagues' thoughts on that. And I would hope that before we got immediately to any motion, that we have the ability, I won't say "I hope," I would offer some guidance, that we spend some time here at the diocese talking through what we think may be the best direction going forward. So hopefully that addresses it. Okay, all right, Supervisor Desmond, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that, too, open hearing, you know, suggestions. I think we ultimately, this discussion will probably veer into, okay, what do we need to decide today? And that's been one of our challenges. I'd like to start, you know, I will have a question, and I'll probably have some comments later as well. You know, I know we're on the verge of approving this early last year, and we stepped back from the brink for two reasons, which I think were absolutely appropriate, to explore more alternatives, alternative ways to comply, and really see if we could all come together over this decision, because it's something that's so important. And I think that was, that was a good decision. I think we really identified a lot of things that this board has invested in, in the last year and a half. And I think we really did a lot more exploration of ways to comply with this consent decree that impact, may not impact, expanding additional space at the, at the main jail. I know, I hope, we may end up more divided up here, but that's because this is a tough decision. And I, my colleagues, I have such a tremendous amount of respect for each one of you, and I know every one of us are agonizing over this thing and the best way to, to approach it. I know it's probably the most monumental decision I've made, certainly since I've been on this board. I want to thank the, I want to thank the commenters, I want to thank all, all the commenters, all the public comment. It was a long evening. You know, I just want to remark that there were, there were a lot of those in support of the staff recommendation that I think slightly missed the mark by focusing on, on things, you know, on concern about victims and crime more in general. Certainly legitimate concern, crime and public safety is at the, the top of the list for a lot of people, locally, statewide, nationally. But that, you know, that, it's only, I think, partially related to the decision that we are making here today. But I appreciate people coming to share their stories, you know, both crime victims and people who are relatives of crime victims, and how many people, I appreciate how many people were here in support, including business leaders, who really, I think, expressed a very thoughtful level of support for the staff recommendation in terms of supporting both the frameworks, you know, the, people acknowledging that, look, we may need some additional space at the jail to provide much better services to people who are incarcerated, but damn it, we need to do a hell of a lot more for people to avoid incarceration to begin with and to divert people away if they do find themselves caught up in the, in the law enforcement, criminal justice system. So I appreciate that. And, and some of those, some of those who oppose this, you know, I'd like to talk about this a little bit because, you know, I think about, this is what keeps me up at night, is just sometimes a feeling of a lack of civil discourse in, in our society, and that troubles me in general. You know, some who oppose this are very open about an agenda that's not necessarily focused on May's or good policy, but on, you know, tearing down our institutions. A small, okay, you know, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm talking, they're making comments, you know, it's not going to happen next year, I can assure you of that.
Please, please, please. Please.
Mr. Chair, please, take, take charge of this, please.
Okay, would you all please just hold on to your comments, please?
Okay.
So we can get through this? Okay, please. I'm going to ask you, please. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's an emotional thing for all of us, you know, and, and again, that's a very small, small number of people, but I'll spend a lot of time attacking law enforcement, and that's something that really hits close to home for me. I was in law enforcement for 24 years, devoted my career to helping people. And, and sometimes the lack of courtesy and civility towards, towards, towards speakers about this issue, it has a chilling effect, and, and I think we need to acknowledge that. There are a lot of constituents who I heard from in my district, and Supervisor Serna, my friend, joined me at one of my community meetings. We had about 450 people there, and there were so many people there that said, you know, "We're, we're afraid to come down to the board chambers because of the environment there." And that is really, that's really unfortunate. It has a chilling effect, and it's, you know, it's intolerance, and that's, that's just a general commentary. But, but most who were opposed to the staff recommendation, I really appreciate their comments because very thoughtful and sincere, shared stories about their experiences and their loved ones in the jails, a very sincere belief that most, if not all, crime is caused by, I think, societal factors that can be eliminated by supports and prevention. I, I agree that's true for a lot of people. I truly do agree, and we have an obligation to do more, to invest in supports and prevention for these folks. But, but I disagree in a lot of ways. You know, as a, as a CHP officer, as a police officer, I encountered a lot of people and responded reports of crimes on the streets, highways, locally, in support of other agencies and in state facilities. There are a lot of people who are troubled and need help. You heard one of my constituents actually describe a, a story that, that I mentioned about an individual who was suffering from mental illness and addiction, who, you know, we desperately were trying to get him better help in LA County, and he ended up dead on the side of the freeway. It's a horrible, horrible situation. So, so that really, you know, did strike me as a young age, but I don't think that applies to everybody, you know? There is, you know, I think we all agree that there are, always have been, always will be, I think, predators and opportunists in our midst who, who don't have regard for others, and I think that's been true in the whole history of humankind. And before I ask...
Please.
And, and one other thing I want to, you know, that, that, again, being a, a law enforcement person, who is not an apologist for law enforcement, I, you know, I'm very proud of, of my career in the Highway Patrol, working in Internal Affairs, doing both internal misconduct investigations and criminal investigations against other law enforcement officers, and working on legislation to reform law enforcement. I'm, I'm proud of that. But I'm also very proud of the men and women in law enforcement in our community in Sacramento County. And, and, you know, I know the head of the DSA called in yesterday and was not met with much respect or civility during his call, but, but his call was really intended to pass that message along that, look, he knows there are problems in law enforcement, there are bad actors in law enforcement, and it, and it's worse when you see it in law enforcement, obviously because of the position of trust and position of authority that, that law enforcement has. But we have, we are blessed to have very dedicated public servants who wear the uniform in our community, who I think would agree with me that we want to weed out the other bad actors who, who bring disrepute to, to the profession. So I want to thank them, make that very clear, that I thank you for your service, those of you who are here in the, in the room. And I know, you know, something up here that I've mentioned a few times is that, you know, we sometimes talk about policies that push law enforcement out of the discussion. And, and I just, I really urge us to embrace policy decisions that, that bring law enforcement into our efforts to respond to the, the challenges we face in a more holistic, comprehensive, treatment-centered way. I think it's going to result in better law enforcement officers who have a better understanding of the challenges and our shared obligations, and, and I think it's going to improve, ultimately improve the effectiveness of a lot of the services we deliver. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I know if it was affecting me personally last night, it was, I know it affected a lot of people who, who serve our community with goodwill and good intent and in good faith. So before I say more, I was, as we were listening to speakers last night, there was a real common theme about us needing to do more, us needing to do more in terms of the alternatives and towards, in terms of diversioning programs, in particular with, with folks suffering from, you know, mental illness and substance use. And I asked Siobhan, I said, you know, I thought to myself, I said, man, we are doing a lot. We've done some, this board has done some great things. I'm not patting us on the back and saying the job is done, but I asked Siobhan if you could, Siobhan, maybe take a few moments of some, some things, some investments this board has made, and, and not just limited to, obviously, the homeless population or incarcerated population. I mean, just in general, just, I think it's important to get that out on the record, some, some big investments this board has made in those areas.
Before you do that, you actually just set forward a summary sheet. I don't know if you'd be willing to share that, or you just could do it verbally, but I think it would be a good visual if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, putting that up?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to, and I'm going to ask Dr. Quist to come up with me as well, because, yeah.
Yeah, I just think, it's, again, it goes to the questions being posed, and I think it was framed in different ways during the course of the hearing, but I think the information sharing will be helpful to the, to the discussion here. So thank you, Siobhan, thanks, Ryan, thanks for asking a question, Mr. Desmond.
Absolutely. No, we, you know, we went back and we looked at our budget, and this board's invested, our, our budget for behavioral health only, and this doesn't include correctional health, has increased by 21% since 2019. And so you've made some pretty significant investments. Some of these are programs that are still being rolled out, and some of these programs have been fully implemented. I just wanted to give a lot of credit to Dr. Quist and his staff. They have done, throughout COVID and before, incredible efforts to get these things stood up despite the workforce challenges and despite COVID. And so also wanted to give a lot of thanks to our Mental Health Board. They've really informed a lot of these efforts as well along the way. And so I think collaboratively, the community and you all have formed, informed and invested a lot of the things here. So I will ask Ryan to go over some of these highlights as I show them.
Yeah, if I can just add also my thanks to the teams that work in behavioral health and their dedication to these, silly, this is a lot of work. Our hearts are in this. We are dedicated to behavioral health. We are dedicated to behavioral health. Sorry.
It's all right, Ryan. It's okay.
Okay. So this is in spite of the fact that we are working our, with half, half teams throughout COVID and we are doing everything we can to benefit our community. All right. So in the last three years since 2019, we have increased our acute beds by 133 beds, excuse me, subacute beds, we increased by 50 beds, SUD residential, just in the last year, we've increased by 50 beds. In terms of our crisis response, Wellness Crisis Call Center and Response Team, the, the board has supported and we're working very hard at trying to implement that. Our Mental Health Urgent Care Center, we have expanded to 24/7. It's going effective December 12th. So very excited that that will be up and, up and going. We have a new-
Next Monday, next Monday, right? Next Monday?
Yeah. Is that when it is?
[laughter]
Monday. All right, Monday.
Go ahead, Brian.
All right. We have a new crisis residential unit that's specifically for transition age youth. We, you supported expanding our mobile crisis support team, which works as the co-response model with law enforcement, as well as our community support teams, which is made up of clinicians and peers that respond after the fact or within 24 to 48 hours. We have a new SOAR, it's called the SOAR, it's a phone line that's for crisis stabilization and mobile response for youth and families. In terms of our, working with our criminal justice population, we did identify this as an area where we wanted to put more prioritization and focus. So we created a new forensics division. As a part of that, we have implemented our first forensic full-service partnership program. We're currently working on implementing assisted outpatient treatment. We're hoping that will be live here in January. I, I will soon hopefully have an actual date in January to be able to tell you when we can start accepting referrals, as well as we will be doing marketing on that. We have expanded a contract for moving 10 Murphy conservates that are currently in the jail to a subacute treatment. We have executed that contract and they have accepted their first two, first two Murphy conservates. We've done a lot in our outpatient services. So just most recently, we did an increased rate because our contract providers reported that they were having a hard time hiring the staff to do this very difficult and important work. And so we increased their rate so that they would be more competitive in terms of recruitment. We also, at the same time, increased capacity for all of our, for all, it says for full-service partnerships, but this was for our entire outpatient, our entire outpatient system. Just recent, right now, it's not even recently, it's like in the moment. We are currently implementing our core behavioral health program, which includes outpatient clinic and a wellness crisis walk-in center. We're currently at seven outpatient clinics open and four wellness centers that are open. And so we still have a few more to go, but very excited about implementing that. That also increased our capacity. So we look at how many people we were able to serve before Core. We look at how many we were able to serve after Core and our, we do have increased capacity. We're implementing CALAME Enhanced Care Management throughout all of our mental health and SUD providers. That says just mental health plans, but it also includes our SUD providers. We, we, a couple of years ago, expanded our collaboration with child welfare, supporting foster youth. We've expanded our collaboration with probation, supporting youth. We have three new full-service partnership programs. The telecare program opened in, in, just before COVID. And then we have both an adult full-service partnership program that's currently being implemented and then our, that's currently open. And then our, our full-service partnership for youth and families will be accepting its first consumer in, in January. We've expanded our children's outpatient providers to include, which also includes housing supports. And as you know, we have a, a amazing partnership and collaboration with SCOWI where we are, we are, have 40 new mental health counselors funded through a partnership with the primary care clinic. We've increased our services to the unhoused. We have invested, made two separate investments for a grand total of $25 million in housing, which we're working with SHRA to implement. We, we went through the first $14 million that we, we invested through, through COVID. We were able to, to spend those funds and, and make some investments in our housing. We have a new heart team, which stands for Homeless Encampment and Response Team, which now, thank you to your support, has 16 mental health workers to serve individuals in our, in our encampments. We've increased our investments in substance use treatment and prevention. We recently, with your support, included both some county general funds as well as some ARPA funds in order to, oh, I jumped one. Sorry. I'm on the third bullet. $11 million for the SUD residential infrastructure and bed expansion. So going, actually, that's both of those. That, that's a duplicate. So it's a grand total of $11 million worth of general funds and ARPA funds with an additional $5 million in Medi-Cal funds that will be all going towards expansion and SUD residential treatment. Just in the last year, we have expanded our SUD residential capacity by 50 beds. I already mentioned that at the top. And then you have also supported our fentanyl awareness campaign, which is of course a prevention program in order to help, help everybody be aware of this important topic. In terms of our inpatient residential continuum, we have six, we have a new psychiatric health facility or PUF that has 16 beds. These are all county-controlled. So they're, they're Medi-Cal beds that are county-controlled, that were dedicated to our county consumers needing those beds. We applied for and received a grant, $23.5 million for a 64-bed subacute facility that we are working on. The construction process that we're hoping to have up and running before January 1st, 2027. So we do have a little bit of a runway on that, but exciting project. In the meantime, we have expanded our pool for subacute beds. And I, as I mentioned at the top, so far, we've seen an increase of about 50 beds that, that we've, that we've been able to locate for our, we're across the state, we're all competing for the same beds. And so, but now that we have this increased pool, we are able to more effectively compete for access to those beds. We added a new level of care here in Sacramento County called Adult Residential Treatment, which is a step down from mental health rehabilitation centers. And then as another step down from that, we have added a new level called Augmented Boarding Care. Our boarding cares were closing because they couldn't stay in business with the amount of money that they make. So we said, we need you in business in order to serve our consumers. So with your support, we augmented how much we're paying our boarding cares. Within the context of prevention and early intervention, we did one round at the beginning of COVID for $10 million of community-initiated, initiated prevention and early intervention programs. And now we're working on our second round for a grand total of $20 million. And then over the past couple of years, we've also made some expansion to our first episode psychosis program, working with UC Davis. And then-
Yeah. And then we added 75 new mental health positions to adult correctional health since 2018. So you can see the team's been busy and we thank you for your investments and happy to take any questions.
I, thank you for your indulgence, my, my colleagues here. And thank you, Ryan and Siobhan. You know, there's a lot of emotion and passion in this room. And, I mean, clearly your dedication, your, your love for your work is so admirable. So I just want to give you a round of applause.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we hear, we hear a lot of cynical things, a lot of negative things about the county. It could be, it could be at the same time, we're trying to pass a, you know, a, a first-of-its-kind partnership agreement. We still hear negativity about things. And I just so appreciate you taking the time to highlight these things today for us and for the public. And, and thank my fellow board members because obviously so many of these things were in, going on well before I got here. And I'm happy to be a, a small part of, of continuing this. So I'll yield the floor for now.
I know you have others in the queue. I just wanted to second the appreciation to Dr. Quist for his obvious, very personal investment in what he does and, and to Siobhan as well. But I think, given the fact that the emotion has been expressed as it has this morning about helping others is proof positive that, you know, when it comes to civil service, I think at every level in this organization, people take their jobs extremely seriously, especially when it comes to the charge to, to help those that are most in need. So I really do thank you, Dr. Quist.
Thanks. Ian, you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Quist and his team. I was once the behavioral health director. And frankly, besides this job, that was probably one of the hardest jobs I've ever had because the teams are so committed to doing the right thing. And as you can see, they've done so much in the last couple of years, all while dealing with COVID and short-staffed. And Ryan is clearly very, very committed to doing this work. And I just wanted to acknowledge Ryan and thank him and his team because I know how extremely difficult that job is.
Great. Thanks, Ian. If, Ryan and Siobhan, before you leave the podium, I certainly would echo those comments and thank you for your work. And I know I've had the opportunity on a number of occasions to express appreciation for work in different realms of what you've just described here and other things that you're responsible for. I, I did want to ask, because again, it came out of the discussion yesterday, and maybe it goes to the last bullet point, on adding correctional health, behavioral health, mental health positions, that, the comment was made that there are over almost 240 folks waiting for mental health assessments that would be eligible for some, I don't know, diversion and/or release and that there's this backlog. And again, I don't want to attribute to the county staff. We have jail psych services, not just, we have a contract with UCD to do that. And again, recognizing the things you've struggled with getting staffing, you can have a thousand positions, but you can't fill them with people because of all the different things that, that compound, you know, the process of getting those positions filled, then it doesn't do a lot of good. So, so what about that? Because if that's one of the areas where, as we're looking at, you know, what was described by Mr. Jones Apple yesterday, this, this balance, that seems to be a real key piece. And it's a key piece going forward, certainly from the standpoint of the people that we're working with, but also for public safety and, you know, and, and public health. So I guess I'm kind of curious about that and how, how do we cut into that?
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the question and I'm going to take one part of it. And I'm going to ask if Public Defender Amanda Benson would come up to take the second part of it. So obviously, when folks are referred to diversion, there's multiple steps within that system that they have to go through. And so I'll let her speak to the legal process that leads to that number that you heard yesterday. However, when it comes to the mental health staff in the jail, we have a contract with UC Davis Health. As of our last check last month, there was 32 vacancies amongst 190 or so behavioral health positions. And the reason for the 32 was only because we had just gotten a contract signed to increase some more positions. So I would say we're looking to fill another 20 of those very soon. So our vacancy rate in mental health in the jail is actually quite low right now, which is great because it speaks to some of the increases in pay that you all have approved recently. So from a jail behavioral health perspective, I wouldn't say that's where our, our clog is right now. But I will ask Amanda if she can speak to the diversion part.
Okay, thanks. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Amanda Benson, Public Defender. We do have people that have been identified as appropriate clients and participants for mental health diversion. There's a few things that are causing the backlog. And when we say waitlist, we mean they could be waiting for a number of things. They've been identified because of the nature of the charges or the, our assessments, our attorney assessments have spotted, you know, or identified them as appropriate. But then we have to then gather more information. We work with our social worker staff. We have to obtain records. We have to file paperwork with the court. They need to be assessed by behavioral health. And then it needs to go before the court to be heard on whether they should be granted mental health diversion. So there's a few different steps in that process. So when we say on the waitlist, that doesn't mean they're necessarily waiting for behavioral health. That may be part of it because I, I do believe behavioral health needs more resources. And I've spoken with Nina Acosta and also Dr. Quist about how we can work together. As we build these programs and as we ask for additional resources for mental health diversion, how do we work together to ensure that both departments are getting the resources that we need to move these cases and get people help more quickly in the process? We have our pre-trial program where we try to assess people as quickly as possible to identify whether they have mental health needs and to start that process as quickly as possible. We are, we do need more resources in our office for that program and for pre-trial and for mental health diversion. It is, there's a few steps in the process. In January, the law changes and it will effectively make more people eligible and suitable for mental health diversion. And so we will be needing additional resources. But behavioral health will also be needing resources because we need them, they are our partners in this, and we need them to provide the assessments. And so we need to work together to, to determine how the resources can work together.
Okay. So let, let me just, on that point, and thank you both for the explanation. So January 1st is about a few weeks away. Things don't necessarily happen all that quickly, but I think embedded in what you say, being judicious but expeditious about one, the assessments and then determinations, and then obviously it's in the realm of the courts. But I guess what is a typical time from, from this, and is there some norm that from time someone is at least identified and then all those various steps are taken on? Because again, if we're talking about a couple of hundred folks, and that's not a static number, I mean, well, it's, it's a dynamic number, I would trust, then it's very important that, you know, one, that we be resourced properly. And then, you know, but you have to present to the court. So they have to be able to take the cases up and there needs to be the oversight in each and every case. And I guess the plan for, you know, how folks are going to, you know, function, problem relief, or be, you know, assisted in, in, in meeting their mental health challenges and needs. So what is, what is kind of the norm? And if we had more resources, how much more quickly, again, not compromising public safety, could you actually accomplish, you know, getting some of those people through the system appropriately?
I'll, I'll just start by giving an overarching framework and then ask Amanda to chime in. So Mr. Jones, yesterday presented that part of our alternatives to incarceration was going to be expansion of the, of the diversion programs. So that is something that our teams are working on. So to answer your question, Supervisor Natoli, we will be coming back to you with the plan for what is the level of expansion that may be necessary in each part of that system in order to fully meet the demands going forward. So I'll let you add.
I would say that in the past, as we've built, started building these programs, it could take months to get a case before the court with all of the things that are needed to support the application for mental health diversion.
And, and these are people that are actually still incarcerated, right? They're not, or some of them are already released when you're doing it?
Both. We, many, many of them are in custody. We do also have some that are out of custody. We give priority to our in-custody clients who are applying for mental health diversion. In the past and, and currently, we have needed to get a, a doctor's report, an expert's report. And we have funding for those reports through a grant. But in, starting in January, in many cases, most cases, we will no longer need that report. So it should go more quickly. But, so in the past, there would be a backlog to have the client evaluated by the expert. There's also the need to have them evaluated and assessed by behavioral health. And that could sometimes take, you know, several weeks. So each of those things would take a couple, you know, between two to six, eight weeks. It could take a long time. And some people were waiting quite a long time. And many of them, some of them may be very serious charges that they could pursue their case through the criminal justice system and, and but we decided-
Well, not everyone's deemed appropriate. I get that. I wouldn't expect them to be.
Right. So sometimes it would maybe take longer than a, a case that has more, lesser charges or less serious charges, rather. So it's hard to say. I would say some of the cases could go several months. the cases could go several months, but the quickest would maybe be six to eight weeks to process.
So is the number, is that a real number, the 238? I think that was the number I recalled from, is, I mean, again, that's not a static number. How many folks are on that list currently, Amanda, that you--
So I spoke with our staff yesterday and was informed that we have approximately 334 felony clients--
Yes.
--who have been identified as appropriate for mental health diversion, who are waiting for at least some part of that process--
And how many, how many in custody?
I do not have that information.
Was it fair to say probably the larger proportion of that number are in custody? Or is that not a fair statement?
I can't speak to that. I do know that we have quite a few who are out of custody. But I would, I would say, I would think that the majority of those would be in custody.
Okay. Well, and I guess the point here is, again, recognizing that, you know, and I think certainly Ryan and Siobhan and you and Amanda have touched on it, you know, that requires not just resources or identify positions or funding behind it, you have to have the people to do the work. And there are a number of hands that touch, and again, appropriately so. Again, you know, this is a public safety issue. It's also an issue of, you know, what's, you know, going to best, you know, suit not only the person that's, you know, we're trying to help, but also if they're going to be released on, you know, what sort of diversion, you know, services are going to be available and, you know, what ties are tying folks back to the, to the system that's trying to assist and help them get better, but also not reoffend. So, but that's still a pretty significant number. When the numbers we were talking about yesterday, when we were looking at overall jail reduction, you know, and numbers from the O'Connell report, that, you know, 600, again, and maybe the, once you were able to, if you, I trust we're going to expand this program or provide the resource, I say expand it, I think it's, if it has proven merit, then put the money behind it and then get the positions additionally filled if possible and work to, you know, help folks, you know, exit the system again properly. I guess I'm just a little puzzled, though, that we have that number. And I guess, and maybe this is for Eric, I know Eric, I'm sorry. So in your calculation and that what O'Connell offered, you know, he had the 600 overall, how did, how did this number of folks, and was this taken into account? Or maybe this has come, you know, post some of the work that Kevin did? Because that's a pretty significant number. You've got 330 folks that are, you know, right now, somewhere in that spectrum. Is that, was that half the 600 number?
No, because that is, as mentioned, a dynamic number that's always changing. So not, that queue would not be all cleared out at one time because they're at different stages of the six to 12 or such weeks. But the, the O'Connell recommendations factored in all of the, what you saw yesterday, really, with our, and this, exactly what's being discussed right now is exactly one of our recommendations in the jail population reduction plan. And so we do believe in an expansion of this work with both the Public Defender's Office and all of the partners on this. And all of those recommendations account for a 600 to 700 average daily population reduction over time. And we will have to, our goal, should the recommendations be approved, to move forward with these, would be to really track which of these 15 recommendations are giving us which results, desired results.
Okay. I know, just other than the queue here, I just wanted to follow on like Siobhan and Ryan and Amanda were still available, because there was two other questions I had on what you had up on the screen. One of it relates to the acute beds. And there was another number that was quoted yesterday that we were still 200, even with what's been added in the work that we've been doing in the community, but in other providers, that we were 283 beds short. Is that a number that you agree with? And if so, because I know we buy services, we spend $50 million a year in buying, you know, medical space for folks that are in need of mental health services. I mean, the county's been doing that, that number has gone, continues to go up. And that's, I mean, we do that from private providers. And I guess it also says there are not enough space. But I'm curious, what is the deficiency from your understanding within the community framework? And you talk about what we fill here, but we don't fill at all, so.
So I think your question goes to the Mental Health Board presentation yesterday that talked about the subacute beds. So when the RAN study was done, it found that we had a sufficient number of acute psychiatric hospital beds.
Okay.
The Mental Health Treatment Center is an acute center, for instance. That's why we're not recommending, amongst other reasons, that's why we're not recommending to expand the Mental Health Treatment Center. However, the subacute psychiatric beds were where we needed to build capacity. So part of that is our 64-bed subacute facility. The other part of that speaks to what Ryan listed, that we expanded our contracts for subacute capacity. We've also developed some other levels of care that folks can step down into. Do you want to talk about the subacute beds and what we're still working on to get to our, to meet our objectives?
The most, so, sorry, a couple of years ago, just before COVID, you all, no, it was in the middle of COVID, you guys supported expanding our pool of funding for the subacute beds. We didn't know, because we knew we were competing for those beds, we didn't know how much of an impact that was going to have. And it has had an impact, probably about 40 beds that we were able to do there. And then, and then most recently, as a part of this year's budget, there was a new contract that we developed with California Psychiatric Transitions, which is more acute, acute side of the subacute, where it's more intensive, supports people who have more intensive needs. And so that resulted in another additional 10 beds.
So in this, as I reflected on this after we left last night's hearing, one of the questions that comes to mind, it relates to how we fund the support services, those beds, so to speak. And if recollection, again, serves me correct, that once folks enter, cross the threshold into jail, even though they're Medica eligible, they're no longer eligible. It becomes entire, and thanks to the state and federal government for this, but that becomes entirely the burden of the county of Sacramento or any other county. So folks that are in custody, and if they're receiving mental health treatment services in the jail, then that's entirely on us. Is that still accurate?
Yes.
And so what it says is that continues to be just a draw. And so if we, and I, again, I'll talk to this later on. But then if I take that conclusion to the next step, if we add more inpatient beds in the jail, that's all on us as a county. If we're able to create inpatient beds, and again, I know restrictions on the size of facilities, inpatient beds, subacute, acute, whatever the degree, the acute, subacute, in the community, and assuming that there's proper placements, then we get assistance with, assuming somebody's Medica eligible, if they're outside of the custodies, or outside the justice system in that sense. Is that, is that accurate?
Accurate for our, excuse me, it's accurate for our 16-bed psychiatric health facilities. We are able to pull down federal match about 50, a little bit more than 50%.
Okay.
The mental health rehabilitation centers unfortunately are all, are larger than 16 beds. There aren't any that are only 16 beds.
And I know, we made a conscious decision a number of years ago, Ian recalls this, I'm sure other board members, to go with the smaller puffs because we could get some additional help with it. Again, we know people need help. But again, we don't have unlimited resources. And so I'm concerned that, and I'm not going to draw you into this right now, but that, you know, what's being proposed here is going to be all on us. Because, you know, as long as those folks are in custody, and needing to help or not, we're paying for that mental health facility 100%, either through realignment and/or correctional health, general fund dollars. Is that accurate? We don't get any reimbursement for people that are--
This is true. The one thing I'd add, though, is that we're not making decisions based on that. We are, we're putting people in the right level of care and not making decisions based on their funding.
No, and I get that. But again, the broader discussion we're going to have here, or the focus discussion we're going to have about, you know, what's being, you know, put before us as far as a recommendation. If that was done in a different manner, recognizing that that may come with some twists and turns, then we might have assistance and paying for it. Otherwise, what's being talked about, what's being recommended, that's all on us.
Yeah, I'd also like to add, Supervisor, and I know, I know you know this, but just for the general public to be aware, and maybe this is something Rick or Eric can speak to. But it really does depend on the legal status of the person. We can't just say because someone has a behavioral health condition, we can transfer them out of the jail--
I get that.
--into a community-based setting. So the legal process really does inform who we can discharge and who we can't into a community-based setting. So thanks.
Right. But everybody in the jail, if they were Medica, if everybody in that jail was Medica eligible, the minute they're becoming, come into custody in the jail, they're no longer Medica eligible. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. There are some reforms going on to allow them to become eligible earlier that haven't taken effect yet. But we will be implementing those as soon as they come online.
And that places a big burden on counties. And I think it goes, and the last comment I make on this right now, is that, you know, this has been, and it was said by a number of folks, I think acknowledging the inadequacy of the facilities, the reason we're talking about conditions of confinement. But when the federal government has problems, they just print more money. And when the state government has problems, they just, you know, they either borrow the money or they shove it down and shift it to counties and cities in some cases. And that's exactly what they've done here. And yet, where you have dollars that would otherwise flow to assist with medical help, with other custodial help and so forth, oftentimes, you know, they throw a little bit of money at it. But then we shoulder the responsibility. And that's what this is all about, is that we're being asked to look at it. And then we get sued. And so we litigate. And so, you know, and as unfair as that is, that's the situation we find ourselves in. But I just, I wanted to raise the point, because again, sitting here in this dais over the years, we've talked about what happens once someone enters the justice system, is that, you know, that medical coverage, and hopefully as reforms come, they've been talking about it for a long time, Siobhan, and you're probably more familiar with it than I am. But it's really unfortunate because again, that would help us with some of what we're talking about. It doesn't solve the issue that's before us today. But okay, that's all I had. Okay. I know Supervisor Frost has been very patient, Supervisor Kennedy, and I don't, Supervisor Desmond, anything else you wanted to add? Okay, thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Siobhan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the discussion, actually, because a lot of what was discussed was on my list of things to discuss. And I appreciated Supervisor Desmond's comments regarding his experiences as a CHP. And I wanted to refer back to, you know, we went through, the conversation yesterday was long, and there were so much, so much great input. And I really appreciated it. And I, I want to say to Dr. Quist that you have always seemed so strong and determined. And in all the conversations over the years, you know, I could feel your passion, but it was at a different level. I never saw your super passion, which I saw today. And I want to let you know that I hold you in very high regard and appreciate you for your, that you have heart for what you do. So I wanted you and Siobhan and everyone who's working in this area, because it's not easy to come. And by the way, I was up till about 3:30 in the morning. So if it looks like I'm having a bad hair day, it's because I am. I was, I was rolling all these comments in my mind and trying to wrap my head around the whole conversation yesterday. So, but it was, it was an intense day. And there was a lot of opinions on all sides of it. And I wanted to speak a little bit to, there was one gentleman who got up, and I can't remember who it was, but he was talking about ladders. And he shared about his life story and asked us to start investing in ladders. And I thought that was so inspiring because the idea of the non-carceral programs is, is good. I support the idea of that our system is broken and we need to fix it. I'm not sure I have all the answers on what and how and how that stacks up. But I personally think, and I want to thank Siobhan for bringing that, and Dr. Quist for bringing that list, because I can't remember all these things you do. It's like it's all happening so fast. But I wanted to share a little bit, you know, I was touched. There were some people who brought Des, myself and Supervisor Desmond out. And I wanted to share a little bit, just to say, I was touched and heartbroken by a lot of the stories that were told. And I want also to express that I don't think crime has, you know, sees color or socioeconomic status. I think, I know this, you know, I have a brother who's dead who spent time in RCCC. I have other family members who are in and out of the jail system. There are heartbreaking, heart-rendering stories about people who were traumatized and raped or killed. And I want to say, because it doesn't, you know, you may, you may look at someone and you may not realize that many people who have suffered trauma never talk about it. And some, some people have amnesia and can't even remember pieces of it, or don't, aren't even sure what happened. So to presume by the color of someone's skin or their socioeconomic status, their, their need or their deserving of justice is, is a little bit not fair. You know, we have to make sure that we're talking about justice for all. I have a sibling who was held at knife point. And when her attacker went to prison, threatened to kill her when he got out. So that changed her life. She, she spent decades trying to figure out how not to be afraid. And I have a mom who spent 20 years working for the Sheriff's Department and police and as a dispatcher. And I heard all the stories. You know, it's a hard job triaging those calls that come, come in. And not knowing, you know, prioritizing which one, who to send where. And the job that the, the police dispatchers and their staff and the sheriff deputies do is not easy, what they do. So I, I do support public safety. And I really appreciated our DA, Ten Ho, who came in and gave us, you know, I, I'm going to be honest, I didn't realize the, I knew that our jails are now, you know, we have more long-term stay with, with more hardened criminals. I didn't realize the real, what that really looked like. And I really was appreciated, appreciative of his report back because that lets us know that we're dealing with a different population. And we can, we have to think of, we have to think outside of the box on how we can improve, you know, the conditions in our jails. I have always supported, I think, on every one of the proposals that the staff brought forward, I've supported improving the jails. There's a reason for that. Because of, you know, and I think my life has informed me, personal experiences make me think I want the jail conditions to be better. I know what it's like to be a family member on the outside, not knowing what's going on on the inside. And maybe not even being able to touch that person because you're not an immediate family member. And there's only so many visits. So I know, I know so many sides. I was a registered nurse. I know about crime and, and the impact of crime from so many places. And what I can tell you is crime doesn't see color or socioeconomic status. So when you say, when you presume that, you know, because someone's a certain color or their position, be careful because you don't know what they've been through. They may not talk about it. I want to say that our jails, I've toured the jails, you know, I think we all know, we need to improve the conditions in the jails. But, you know, we had, there were a lot of comments last night about the consent decree and the budget and the cost, you know, did we do a cost benefit analysis? And could we, could this money be used better in the community? And, you know, I want to just have, I don't know who would speak to this, I don't know-- if it's our legal counsel or what, but, you know, my opinion, what I know about the consent decree is, we negotiated for years, Supervisor Kennedy and Peters went through, I think over a year of, you know, conversations, trying to hammer out, you know, what can we do, what can we afford, and how can we best meet the needs of our community in Sacramento County? And they represented us well. And the staff have just worked tirelessly to try to come up with a proposal that can meet the requirements of the consent decree, which gives us some discretion, but there's also, we have to move on it. We can't just not, you know, it's, it's like a, it's the law, it's a requirement. We have to live up to our agreement, or there are consequences. So, you know, we do, we do have discretion, but there's limitations. So I wonder, I think it's important to, for people to know that we need to move on something. We have to make a difference, and, and this is only going to be part of it, because there were, you know, I think six different areas that we have to, you know, focus on to improve not only the, the conditions in the jails, but, you know, there were, there were several things that we had to do. So I wonder if you could just, for the sake of, you know, the public, let them know, I mean, we can't just, we don't have the discretion to say, oh, first of all, we don't have a billion dollars or 450 million in the bank with discretion to, to spend it into the community. If, this is something we have to do, and then we'll have to figure out how to get the money. Can, can staff or council speak to that and let every, so everyone can understand our position?
Yes. Rick Hire, Supervising Deputy County Counsel. The umbrella that this conversation is happening under, of course, is the May's Consent Decree with six specific remedial plans that you mentioned, Supervisor Frost. But more directly impacting our conversation today is the memorandum of agreement that the county entered into with class counsel earlier this year. That memorandum of agreement was sparked by the class counsel initiating the dispute resolution process, that's part of the consent decree, about their concerns that were specific in the moment to suicide prevention issues in the, of course, in the jails, but also the larger issues about jail population reduction and the facilities. And in that memorandum of agreement, the county agreed that we would come by the end of the year with a plan to reduce the population and a plan to address the facility deficiencies. The consequence of us not meeting those obligations that we agreed to is that the class counsel will go the next step in the dispute resolution process, which is to take us back to federal court on an enforcement action, which could result in them asking for and receiving, receivership to be placed on the county, where a receiver would be left with the discretion to make the choices about what to do with the deficiencies that we have in the, the facilities. And that receiver would be empowered to make those decisions, but the county would still be obligated to pay for them.
And I think that underscores, you know, an important concept of local control. I think locally, we know better what our community needs than if someone at a higher outside level is making decisions. And so I think it's important to understand that, because I don't know that we have full discretion at this point. We, I mean, we have to live up to, to that. I also wanted to underscore the fact that we did, we did a lot of work over time. We had consultants come in and look at our jail, you know, I don't know if anyone can kind of, I don't think we have to summarize, I just want to say, we, we were trying to figure out, what can we do to maybe live up to those requirements of the ADA and the consent decree without building added jail space? Could we do it? And what we found out was that, you know, when we improve our jail cement tower, you know, we are losing 30% of our capacity. And so we, we have so many different needs, and part of the requirements that we have to come to terms with is that the, the treatment in the jails, time out of cell requires added staff, and it, it requires a different dynamic with the, the current jail population. And what I mean by that is, you have different gang members, you have, you know, seriously mentally ill or criminally insane. You can't always let everyone out at the same time, and sometimes there's some people that can only be out of cell with one or two officers, which means we need more, more officers to, to provide actually the adequate, I guess, conditions in, for the inmates. And so-
We funded that already. We funded that going early on, have we not? We funded those positions two, three years ago.
We have had, have added significant positions for both correctional health and custody, but the other thing that's required for out-of-cell time is space.
Right.
So it's all the things Supervisor Frost just mentioned, but it's also a space need.
But the positions have been funded, so we're not, that, we've already stepped up to the plate and spending $100 million more a year between correctional and custody staff, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Deputy County Executive Eric Jones, we've added significant staffing. Many are still vacant, as been, has been discussed. However, budgeted staff positions have been added to both adult correctional health and the sheriff's office over the last several years.
Yeah, so, you know, that was something that, you know, in the conversations yesterday, there was an assumption that if we add this special, you know, facility that creates an accommodation for the, maybe mentally ill or people who require medical care, that it's adding beds, that we're just adding, but actually what we're doing is we're removing beds on one side while, you know, separating out a certain category to put them in a place that's better for them and that helps us provide better care. And I think it's important to point that out, because people are thinking we're adding and we're actually taking beds out as we're adding these extra beds, and which organizes it in a way to provide better care, actually.
That is staff's recommendation, well, all of the recommendations or options that were provided by Nochtan Lewis considers and builds into the, the concept, the reduction of at least 600 to 700 inmates from the average daily population. But I just, if I could have a moment to speak to what I understand as the mistrust that if you build a building, it will, whether the intention now or not is to expand, it will lead to expansion down the road. And to that point, if the board does adopt one of the options, the next step will be a public RFP, which will have to include the requirements to have that restriction put into the design and build of whatever is going to be constructed. And that is not only public for all the constituents here to see, but it will be necessarily being reviewed by class counsel and the subject matter experts, who even if they didn't want to, we would be bringing into the process to ensure that we were not going to be building ourselves into more issues with the May's Consent Decree. And the consent decree won't end the moment that we go through the construction. We will still be in the consent decree until we reach full compliance, which is not going to be conceivable until that structure, should that be chosen, is operational.
And I think, you know, originally, they wanted us to achieve compliance in two years, and Supervisor Kennedy and Peters were able to negotiate it to six, you know, and staff, legal counsel, were able to negotiate it to six years or something like that. We're not even going to make that, the rate we're going. So we're on a, we are on a timeline, even though it's a loose timeline, we're under pressure to perform.
The most pressing is the memorandum of agreement. But again, the umbrella is the May's, which has the timeframe of compliance, when we reach substantial compliance. And of course, there are many, many areas that we haven't reached that in, and fortunately, most of them have to do with the facility structures.
Can I, Supervisor Frost, can I ask a quick follow-up on the point? Rick, thank you, the point you made about if this board decides to go forward with, you know, say 1A, for instance, obviously, the plaintiff's counsel will still be heavily involved and engaged in that. And in light of a lot of the comments and concerns that we would almost, us or the sheriff's firm would try to pull a bait and switch and, and take that additional space and convert it to more capacity for bodies, that would bring us right back out of compliance with the consent decree. Is that accurate?
Yes, because I think it's fair to say, and I mentioned it yesterday, that class councils, of course, they're concerned about the conditions of confinement, that's what brings the action. But they were also concerned that this would be a vehicle for the county to expand capacity. And they're very clear that that was never going to be acceptable to them, that anything that we did could not expand capacity. So to your question, Supervisor, if, if that were to happen, even if somehow we got out of the consent decree because we reached compliance, I believe we would be seeing them back at our doorstep.
And, you know, I just want to, for now, I'll, I'll close with one more point that I wanted to make, because I, I truly think that there are people who jail, that they don't belong in jail, they could, there could be, they could be better served somewhere else, not in jail. So the idea of non-carceral, I like the idea of expanding our non-carceral programs, which obviously we're doing and we continue to do, because I've had conversations with Siobhan and others around, you know, really exciting programs that are in the works behind the scenes. But is it, is it safe to say that that could qualify as us, you know, cooperating with the consent decree with, you know, expanding those non-carceral programs in conjunction with the, the mental health wing, or whatever you want to call it, that, that we're building? We could potentially, you know, redirect those folks into different programs, and it could actually begin to, you know, be, begin to change the way we look at how we, how we process people through our jail and qualify toward our requirements of the consent decree.
The answer, the short answer is yes. The more nuanced answer is that the framework that Mr. Jones provided yesterday, it's, it's both that we need to address to, to meet our obligations under the memorandum of agreement. We need to have a plan, and Mr. Jones laid that out, to address population reduction, and a plan to address the facility. One is only half of what we have to do.
Okay, well, I'm inclined to support, I think, I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done over a long time to try to work through this, and I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation for the 1A. And I, I like the idea of working hard to expand all the, you know, outside, non-carceral programs and mental health, and, you know, the list goes on, but those are the primary ones. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Senator Kennedy.
Thank you. I was actually going to ask that pointed question as well, as far as, you know, do we run the risk of not meeting the consent decree? I know this ask, this has been asked and answered, but I'm going to ask it again, because it's very important, and I think it's what really brought us here today. Do we run the risk of not meeting the needs of the consent decree if we were not to support staff's recommendation today? And I'll ask that of either you gentlemen or the consultants.
So I spoke to class counsel this morning, prior to the meeting, and their message to me was, I think, pretty clear, that any plan that doesn't address, there are three concerns about, well, I should say four, population reduction is number one. But when we talk about the facilities, any plan that doesn't address the mental health deficiencies of services in the facility, the medical services and ADA is something that they will view very critically and would probably end up being something they seek in enforcement action on.
Thank you. Amanda, that Amanda. So we heard yesterday too, and I know that, you know, that's how we have smart people like you here, because county budgets are about as complicated a budgets as there are. But government budgets and going out for bonding dollars is pretty consistent across the board with public monies. And the color of money is always important. Yesterday, we heard a lot of, you know, you're spending $450 million, and that's at this point a number. You know, you could spend that money on all these programs, and there was a lot of programs that were listed. Is it likely that we're going to go out and, on the bond market for ongoing programs?
No, no. We would, we would go to the bond market to facilitate, to finance facilities that have, you know, lengthy, useful life that we would be using over the period of time that we were paying the debt.
Right. Thank, thank you. And I have, I have a few comments to make at this point, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, and my notes are like all over the place, so if it's not terribly coherently arranged, I apologize. You know, it is kind of ironic that Tuesday night, we were here and got pretty significantly criticized by some of the same people who were, were critical of us, of the proposal that's before us yesterday. And what we did Tuesday was actually adopt programs and a plan, which I think completely helps to address the exact population that we're talking about today. I'll say that. The other thing that, you know, has been said is, it was said many times yesterday, that this is business as usual, it's the same old, same old, you're not created, you're not doing, well, I'll tell you this. Originally, when I supported the, the original proposal to add on to the jail facility and R-triple-C primarily, you know, we were, you know, at the time chasing state dollars and a grant, and, and I was supportive. Then, as I did more research and I met with, you know, my friends in the community, I saw that whereas that money was out there, it probably was not the best public policy to just go after money, to chase money for a facility, if there were other ways that we could alleviate what is a bad situation. And so that's actually, you know, when it's been said, why are we here again? If you'll look at the tapes, I would imagine, and I said tapes, that shows my age, you would, I think, see that, that my concern was that we were just going for a capital improvement and not really digging deeply enough into everything else. And, and that's where I reversed my position. And, you know, what I see has happened since then is a lot, between, you know, we've got a more independent IG now, we've got the Community Review Commission, we've got all of the fantastic things that Dr. Quist talked about and addressed, that are, you know, are they the end? No, but they're more than a beginning, I think we'll certainly agree with that, and, and going to make a huge difference. We've significantly decreased the number of federal inmates, and I'm not even going to be, cover them all, I'm just going to, some, we've severed our contract with ICE. You know, we, we have increased our efforts and diversion efforts through the Public Defender's Office and the probation programs. And so when I look in here and I see new, 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 and I see all of the work that we have done, that's what I wanted done, before I would consider a capital project. And, and we've done a great deal of that already. I'll tell you why I've always, and I have friends in the audience who we have disagreed for years on this issue, why I have, you know, never said I would never support- for years on this issue, why I have, you know, never said I would never support a capital project in the jail. And that's because as one of five members of this Board of Supervisors that has the responsibility on a daily basis of ensuring that the people that are in our custody are our responsibility and that we provide better resources for them and we provide better facilities for them. I've said it before, I'll say it again, the jail as it is today, it's medieval, it's archaic, and I do believe, you know, having some experience in the construction industry in building large projects or working with those that build large projects and even these types of projects, I do believe that we are very hindered and limited because of the design of the current facility. So why I've always been interested in, I've never been interested in increasing the capacity and the number of beds. I wouldn't have been even if it wasn't for Mays, but I'm certainly not under Mays because of the dire consequences that can come if we don't do something about it. So this isn't, that's, I haven't flip-flopped, what I've done is I've been consistent from the beginning. I do believe that we need a medical and a health, a mental health facility at the jail that we currently lack. And with all the diversion programs in the world, and God knows I'm supportive as anybody of the diversion programs, because I'm more interested, quite frankly, and I've said this from this dais and other places as well, I'm more interested in diverting people and keeping them from becoming a part of the system than I am about decreasing the size of the jail population. I know that sounds like you're splitting hairs, but it's a completely different approach. So while, you know, I, I am a big supporter of diverting people who, you know, if you're in there because it's a manifestation of your mental illness and you're not a threat to others or hell, and that's why you're in there, you shouldn't be in there. But, that being said, there are still people that are going to be incarcerated that are in need of mental health services. That's always going to be the case, that has always been the case. Can we do better? Yes. And I think a modern facility to serve the needs of those folks is necessary. I think it's needed. I do think, and anybody who's been into the intake loop, I mean, that place is abysmal. And, you know, you can talk HIPAA and ADA all day long, which is, I believe, is factual, but it's also a facility that people should not be subjected to. You know, these are folks who are incarcerated for a reason, but they're still our neighbors. They're still human beings. It's my turn, Dr. Quist. These are still people that we're responsible for. Is there institutional racism in our criminal justice system? Absolutely. Anybody who says there isn't is either delusional or just lying. But I don't see how building this facility is going to increase institutional racism in our, I think it's going to increase the, it's going to improve the circumstances in which our incarcerated neighbors are, are living under, particularly those that have mental health issues. I also will say that as an advocate of the, and Supervisor Serna can speak even more to this with his work with the Downtown Partnership and others to try to figure out how we can do a better job of release, you know, having a release loop, having social workers in there, having people help connect people with housing and not just open up the doors at 3:00 in the morning, I can't think of a better program in the jail. Well, all of these things, including time out of, and there's another thing, it's not, it wasn't just, as Rick said, the mental health component of it and the healthcare component of it and the HIPAA component of it and the ADA component of it, but it's also the existing conditions in alleviating the need to have people in cell for 23 out of 24 hours, which is inhumane. We can't do all of those things without more square footage. And that's just, that's just a real fact. So at this point, unless my colleagues can convince me otherwise, I still believe that in order to improve the conditions in that jail and improve the conditions in our community, that we need to do something with that horrible building we have now and a capital improvement project is called for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. All right, Sue Rose Serna and Sue Rose Desmond.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to, I see that Supervisor Desmond's in the queue, so I'll just use my time right now just to put a finer point on some of the line of questioning that Supervisor Kennedy asked of Amanda because I think it's only half of the answer. So I completely understand that bonding is going to be, is dedicated for capital projects and not programmatic initiatives. However, if everyone will recall from my line of questioning yesterday, it's not necessarily the total value of the certificates of participation that would be issued for the construction of this, but it's the debt service. And if I recall correctly, correct me if I'm wrong here, Amanda, that debt service impacts the general fund, does it not?
It does, you are correct.
Right. So the other, so the other half of the story is that that debt service does have a material impact on our budgeting for not just other capital projects in the county, but I'd argue even more so, programmatic initiatives in all realms of county governance. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, and thank you, my colleagues and Supervisor Kennedy, you articulated a lot of my thoughts much better than I could. You know, I think I mentioned earlier on that, you know, a lot of the conversation we had yesterday was a little bit off the mark about what we're, you know, what we're discussing today. I mean, first and foremost, what we're discussing is here is what, of course, what's going to comply with the consent decree, but the consent decree is about what decisions we make that are going to have the highest likelihood of improving the lives, mental and physical health, access for people who are incarcerated and accomplishing that through different mechanisms, including alternatives, diversionary programs, everything we've discussed today. But it seems, Rick, I mean, what you have said, I mean, I feel like if we don't take the step of increasing the space so we can create a better environment, that compliance with the decree, I have a real fear, I mean, I have a lot of trepidation about the money. You know, that really concerns me is that we are all guardians of the fisc here and it's an awful lot of money and it's going to tie our hands from doing a lot of other things. So I want to delve in a little more about this idea of receivership. And I know you talked about it a little bit with Supervisor Frost, and I'm not going to ask you for, you know, percentages or making predictions, but flesh out a little bit for me, how you think, you know, a receivership could come out? I mean, what could be the results of that? Because you hear different things. You hear, hey, it could end up being, it could end up striking maybe the balance you're trying to strike here, it could end up being something completely different on one side or the other. Based on your study of other similar situations, because I'm sure it's happened, what would you think would be the most likely outcome?
So the reason a receiver would be chosen or sought and perhaps likely granted if the class council went that way is, from a court's perspective, you have an expert that is given authority to make decisions to improve the conditions that that expert finds we are not in compliance with. And that expert, that receiver will probably bring other experts along. That's very similar to what happened or pretty much the path that happened when CDCR went into receivership. There was a receiver that was appointed, he had a very large staff, of course, there were many, many more facilities.
That was Clark Kelso, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
My former law professor, okay.
Yes, mine too. And once a receiver decides a plan is appropriate, the receiver would have to take it back to court, and the court would be asking one fundamental question, will this get to compliance? And if the answer is yes, then the receiver would have the authority granted from the court to encumber the county funds to achieve that resolution. And if the receiver thought it was, say, option 1A, then that is what the receiver would set the county on the path to do. The receiver could come back and say, actually, I think it's more that you need. It's also conceivable the receiver could say less, but I don't think that's likely based on all of the expert reports we've received over the past eight years. But that's the realm of possibility that would happen if a receiver was granted or put in place.
Okay, thank you. I feel like if a receiver, for instance, was going to say, okay, we're going to, I'm going to make decisions that will bring the county in compliance through population reduction in the jail, that would entail a receiver really having to dig into a lot of more complicated things that are probably a lot more complicated than simply saying, just build a bigger facility. That's what scares me. I'll tell you what, what frightens me is that a receiver would probably make a decision on something that's going to be most likely to work without, you know, taking chances and kind of experimenting with different programs, and that could be build a whole new jail somewhere else. And my trepidation, my fear over, you know, the budgetary impact of making a decision today would be magnified, you know, fourfold, right, fivefold if that were to happen.
That's right, although I would say that I think that it's, the reason that that might not be a real possibility is, and goes to Supervisor Kennedy's question yesterday, is that a new jail, a brand-new jail to cover all the services to replace both RCCC and the main jail would take a decade to build. And I don't think a receiver would be interested in setting us on a course that puts off compliance for a decade. And then, as I mentioned yesterday, the location of that is also a tremendous hurdle. So I think that it's more likely that the receiver would consider the space that we have to utilize that. Now, what that might be, I don't know, and we just talked about that. But I also should add that as the receiver is doing all of this work, we're paying, the county would be responsible for paying for the receiver, that salary that is the receiver's salary, and any staff that the receiver thought was necessary, or any experts that the receiver thought were needed in addition to what's already been retained over the course of this consent decree.
And we ultimately may end up in the same position that you're recommending here.
That, that's a real possibility.
Okay, I'll just say, you know, my, I, in light of all this, and it is a difficult thing, I agree with Supervisor Kennedy, I, it seems to me that the embrace of both frameworks, both frameworks, hand in hand, with Framework 1 being just as, if not more, important than Framework 2. But I also think that, you know, the other steps you outline in A1 and A2 absolutely need to be a part of this as well, putting a lot of thought into another facility that is specifically designed to kind of the service and assessment that we had been talking about yesterday and that I know exists in other locations. But that's where, that's where my thoughts are at this point.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy, back in queue.
Thank you, I apologize for coming back, but I just want to, more from, on the fiscal point, and I appreciate the follow-up questions, Supervisor Serna, it's not lost on me, and matter of fact, it weighs heavily on me because I understand the economics of it, but here's how I justify it for myself, who has to sleep at night. And that's that we've got a facility that is highly outdated, it is by nature of its design, it was outdated the day it opened, that's regrettable, but it's a fact. We have a responsibility to the people who are in there, the inmates primarily, and then also the people who work in there and provide a safe environment for them. I don't think that this facility provides a safe environment for either the people who work there or, more importantly, the people who are living in there. And we also, as we spoke about yesterday and we speak about regularly, that the correctional system in California is in a completely different place. I agree with the Chair 100% that the state sticks it to us whenever they can, be it AB 109, be it Medi-Cal, or so many other things, I agree with that, but it's a fact, you know, and it's a reality. And so I think we owe it as one of the most, one of the primary responsibilities of every county, whether you like it or not, one of the primary responsibilities of counties, the way counties are established, is they operate jails. Should they be smaller? Should they be more humane? Should they provide better services? Do not agree at all. Yes, they should. But the fact of the matter is, we haven't invested significantly in this jail since it opened. We've done things here and there, roof, air conditioning, you know, we, we do, we've done, you know, minimally what we could at the beginning and trying to do more to meet the Mays consent decree, and we are doing more, but I still think that we have a responsibility to invest long overdue money into one of the primary facilities that the county operates. It's the roles of counties, I know we have many, many roles, and there's different hierarchies of importance, but it's an important one. And I just, I believe that the investment's overdue and we have to do it in order to create a better environment over there.
Thanks, Patrick. Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know, I recognize that you've been patient, so I'll keep my comments short here. But I do want to just make clear that I share completely Supervisor Kennedy's concerns about the conditions of an antiquated jail facility. I completely share the concerns about its impact on the people that are, that live there and the people that work there. So I just don't want to leave those last comments, maybe inadvertently inferring that I don't care about that, I do. It's the expense that I am very concerned about.
Phil, you know that wasn't my intention.
I understand, but I'm, I'm clarifying it. You're clarifying your point, I'm clarifying my point. Amanda, what, again, what would be the annual debt service impact to the general fund again for 1A?
So at this point, we're estimating, using some fairly conservative assumptions, about $50 million annually.
A year.
Correct.
$50 million a year. That is roughly, just for comparative purposes, that's roughly five times our annual park, regional parks budget.
Say it!
Just, I mean, just think about that. So it's, again, my concern is the expense, it's not debating the need at all. I get that, but it's the expense, the extraordinary expense.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, 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 please. All right, I want to take a moment, again, I've certainly heard my colleagues weigh in, I want to take a few moments to weigh in as well. And I would just note, I think it was said by Supervisor Desmond earlier, and I've listened to what each of my colleagues has said and certainly the hours of testimony yesterday, but this is probably one of the bigger decisions, I will say, during my career as a member of this Board of Supervisors over now nearly fully 28 years, for a variety of reasons. There are the policy framework, I think, the human impacts, the budgetary impacts, and just all the considerations that have gone into this. And certainly, this topic isn't new to this board, we've had it before us in various bits and pieces, and some larger bits and some, you know, smaller pieces over time. And, you know, what I reflected on is what happened yesterday, there's not anything, anyone in this room or anybody on this earth can do anything about, but we can learn from it. And what we can impact, obviously, was happens today, in this moment, and we need to keep in, and I think, in forefront of our thinking, what happens tomorrow. And it's been correctly said here, since the establishment of this county in the 1850s, you know, 170-plus years ago, you know, public health, public welfare, public safety have been the responsibilities of everybody who's gone before us and everybody who's going to succeed us now. Has it gotten more complicated over the last century and a half? Heck, yes. And has it gotten more complicated in the last 25 years or the 40-plus years of the establishment of this county? I'd say, yes, it has. And I think what I alluded to earlier and Patrick correctly restated it is, my experience has been, and again, it's not that you go around griping about it, you just, you don't have to accept it, you can push back, but the reality is that many of the responsibilities for the human conditions in this community, and we as representatives are given tremendous responsibility, tremendous, I think, authorities in some cases to make decisions about the dollars, but the resources and the ability. in some cases to make decisions about the dollars, but the resources and the ability to provide programs and services that address the public welfare, health, and safety. And I, for one, have taken that seriously, as do my colleagues, past and present, and it's a big challenge at times. And I know our staff does as well, takes it very, very seriously. And over the years, I'll just say that certainly public safety has been, you know, very, very much on my mind. I've spent many, many, many hours and days out in communities that I've been given the privilege of representing. But public safety comes in a lot of different forms. And I think that along with that comes the responsibility to treat people with dignity, with respect, with compassion, humanity, you can go use a lot of different adjectives. But bottom line is to treat people the way that we would want to be treated ourselves. And to maintain, you know, hopefully, a community and a quality of life, and do things that contribute to that, that make this a desirable place to live, to grow up, to raise a family, to come to work, to play in, to be a part of. And, you know, when I think about what we've talked about for the last 24 hours, most part of that, you know, certainly the inadequacy of the facilities in which people are kept in custody. And I don't think anybody can be proud of the conditions over there, and they're not good ones to work with, and they're not good ones to be in. And we do have an obligation to try to improve the conditions there. But I also reflect on what's being before us, and I'm going to draw upon the experience of yesterday, of a more recent yesterday, during the time of recession. And that was a period of very difficult decision-making. I've described it many times. I know I've been quoted as being really, really awful. It wasn't just awful for those of us that had to sit here and look out across the faces of people that were going to be denied services, or are going to lose their jobs, or are going to find that tomorrow morning, you know, a medical clinic was going to be closed, or that the mental health treatment center was going to be closed. Decisions that we made during that period of time were ones that I couldn't even imagine coming into the recession. But one of the things that was recession-proof was the jail. In the sense that when we got to talking about public safety in our neighborhoods, in our business districts, in our communities, we were told, the last, the obligation, the first obligation is, is to maintain those 24/7 facilities. And the then sheriff stood before us, as did other law enforcement officers, as did other public health officer, our county executive. And the choices we were given is that you could eliminate all patrol services in the county unincorporated area, but you would still have to maintain the jail. And so, at the time, I recall this very, very clearly, that we were told we had more officers assigned to the jail because of the responsibilities that go with the in-custody responsibilities, than we had available for all the various other duties and activities that were going to be conducted on behalf of the population of then probably 1.2 million people. And most of those, I mean, a proportion of that was in the unincorporated area. And so the reality is, is that if we build, and if we take a mortgage on to improve a very outdated facility, that mortgage will be recession-proof because we will meet our obligations of the county. And whether it's 50 million, or 25 million, or $100 million a year, it will chew up that capacity. This board would take that on consciously. But you also take on the staffing responsibilities, and that's what concerns me, and that's the point I really wanted to go to, that all the things in this framework are positives, that go to things that, some that have been proven, some that still have, you know, more work yet to be understood about, you know, how they're going to, you know, prove out, certainly in improving both the jail population numbers, but also in helping people to be better. But these are not recession-proof, I will tell you right now. I know. Because I was one of those who sat at this dais and pushed the button to lay off 1,500 county employees that cut services, millions of dollars in services, public safety, public health, the whole realm, anything that we had discretion over. And those were monumental decisions. And they affected lives of people in this county, in this room, and probably for generations to come. And so if we get into that situation again, I will tell you, as much as these are doing great things, and will help us meet the consent decree, that whatever we build into the correctional institution, that is recession-proof. These are not. Probation got cut, public health got cut, the Sheriff's Department got cut, child protective services got cut, adult protective services got cut, mental health and treatment centers closed. The list went on and on and on. They were terrible decisions, or awful decisions, but ones we made in order to balance the budget, to meet our bond obligations, to meet our responsibilities that we had no choices in. And so, bringing it back to what's before us, what really concerns me is that with all the good work that Siobhan, and Ryan, and Anne, and Eric have described, that's all great, it's doing good work in the present. But I'm concerned about what tomorrow will bring. And if we go in this direction, not that the facilities, and I do agree with some of the interim steps that have been proposed here, and such, I am legitimately concerned. And again, my service on this board will come to an end in about a few weeks. But I'm going to continue to be a resident of this county and live in this community. And again, I'll trust whoever will succeed me on this board, and certainly in the realm of the county staff, who are very dedicated, and those that protect us in all the different ways that they do. But taking on a mortgage of this size, and then recognizing the staffing that will have to go behind it, and some of that's going to be assumed anyway, because again, I don't want to overstate this, I am just very, very concerned that we go in this direction, we close out the options for this board next June, and for subsequent years, and when times get tough, and again, I think, I want to commend Anne and the staff, or, and certainly my colleagues here, for, you know, building back after the Great Recession, that if we go in this direction, the commitment is one that's for 30 years, at least, if not longer. And that, when I heard yesterday, you know, and saw in some of the graphics over the last few days, that, you know, now we're talking about another full-service facility and so forth, but maybe we get 50 years if we make certain, out of the existing facility, if we make these additions, that's even more unsettling. And it goes to Supervisor Desmond's point, that, you know, if you go into receivership, maybe they would tell you, you have to do something more. I guess, I don't necessarily fear that as much. When I say fear, in the sense, as much as I do, is if we take the step here today, and again, this is only providing the direction, to go ahead and take on basically a half a billion-dollar obligation, which will come in bits and pieces, and this board will have a chance to touch it along the way, that we will set a course that will put this county in a position, when times get tough, and they will get tough, and it may happen in the next few years, it may not happen for another decade or two, that the capacity, even with growth and so forth, to maintain these services and all the other ones Supervisor Stern alluded to, whether it's in parks, or in other community services, community prosecution, in, you know, code enforcement, animal care, even in transportation, where we've had capacity in the last few years, and we've taken dollars to go into a badly deteriorated road system. We're going to lose, somebody's going to lose, the ability to have those decisions before you, because we will, again, if we make an obligation like this, it's going to take 50 million off the top, it'll take 100 or 120 million off the top for staffing, that will not be cut because of the obligation that goes with taking care of folks who are in our custody. So, again, I want to commend staff, because this is not a criticism of staff work, because, again, they were given certain parameters. And I think having the combination to what Patrick said earlier, and certainly Sue touched on it, you know, going into areas and really making a commitment in mental health, and in community health, and in access and alternatives, but maintaining public safety, it's all well and fine. And I think it certainly, this has a great chance of being successful. But the fiscal piece of it, I think, will loom very big when it comes to ultimately, you know, maintaining the facility, which, and we talk about jails here, and then what happens in the community. And again, I've been a part of the decisions, some of those, if I had to do them again, I'd probably do them the same way. Am I proud of them? Not necessarily so. And again, I have some emotion around that, because again, I know what it means to the community. And the community in which I live, I make my home, I care about all the folks in this room and the people in this county. That's been my responsibility, and I bear that with a lot of seriousness. So I want to just say that, again, you know, whatever direction we go on this board, obviously, will be guided by the information and the facts, and certainly the legal expertise and the professional expertise. And we have a situation that needs to be dealt with, there's no question about it, that with the inadequacies in the jail loom big, and we're not going to make changes at the state or federal level that are going to impact anything, any of those things anytime soon. But I guess I would suggest that, for today's purposes, and kind of where I'll land, I guess I'll just say that since I got the microphone, is that certainly supporting going forward with the, and I advocated this from this position, not at the Chair, but certainly as a member of this board, two years ago, is that take the money and begin to do the ADA and HIPAA compliance parts of this. I know we took a timeout because we wanted to see how that factored into what's now before us today. But begin to do those things yesterday. And also then, you know, I get it with the booking loop. I mean, it is abysmal, until what Supervisor Kennedy said. But I also saw the opportunity and what was discussed here, that, talking about the booking, the release, why not have a, if we're going to create something, it's just not about how you take people into the system. If you can divert them, great. But then what do you do upon the release? And so, be creative. Let's do something that, you know, has those services. Somebody talked to that, maybe it was you, Eric, yesterday. And not just once you've exited it, but as you're, you know, preparing to release, and you're not, you know, you're going to have service providers right there before you, that you just don't go on the sidewalk, and I'll give you a card, and you can call somebody in a week. No, we have folks that are ready and willing to help people who are exiting our jail. And I would lastly want to say, because I don't want to ever downplay, again, it certainly hits me pretty hard when you see folks here before us who've lost loved ones, we heard people who had been victims who, you know, certainly didn't, you know, didn't agree with staff recommendation. We also had others who were very concerned for their safety. And I think we need to feel safe within ourselves, within our homes, within our community. And when you've had tragedies, and folks who've, lives have been taken, or forever changed because they've been raped, or assaulted, or traumatized, that is, that's terrible. And again, we need to, you know, protect against that and do our best to see to it that those things never happen again. But I guess I would just encourage, as we go into this, and I'm going to stop with this, is that we really, and I know we have, again, we've been given a lot of information here, thinking long and hard about, this is a point of departure. We can accept a staff recommendation that's before us, but I think if that's what we do, recognize that it will limit the options. It may deal with the moment, in the crisis of the moment here, but I think it will limit this county's ability. And if things get bad again, I hope and pray that there are more choices given to whoever's sitting in these seats than were given to us 10 years ago. So with that, I'll stop.
Thanks. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, you know, I, the struggle that hearing your voice and feel, and I join you in that. And what has made me lose sleep as well is knowing that the financial obligations will probably have a more profound impact in District 3 because of the unincorporated communities. And that is certainly not lost on me as well. It sounds like we all agree in terms of what needs to be done, but it's the disagreement in terms of what we do because of the financial implications. And I guess my, the way I think about it is, and maybe it's an oversimplification, either we shoulder this burden, or this burden is going to be put on our shoulders. And you mentioned something that kind of stuck with me, is that if we shoulder the burden, we do maintain a level of control. And I know it is, it's not a certainty that this burden will be imposed on us. Obviously, receivership is not a certainty. But I'm very afraid of that. I mean, I'm afraid it's going to make, not only is it going to result in us having this financial obligation, but it'll make it even worse, even if it's not worse in terms of the total amount. It'll be worse because we will lose all these things, you mentioned, all these abilities to continue touching this along the way, if it's in the hands of a receiver. And the other thing that I think about, I want to ask maybe staff this question, is what if there were no maze consent decree, if there were no case? I mean, this jail is, when would we have to make a decision one way or another about doing something at this jail? I mean, that decision would be confronting this board at some point. Rick, is that, you know, has that discussion come up, just even with Knox and Lewis and the other consultants?
Well, I'll answer it this way. If there wasn't a maze eight years ago, which is really when it started, I know we say 2020, but we started the process in 2015, we would be looking at another inmate that is the named plaintiff in a class action, if there had been no improvements in the jail. That we would be in a different, a class action lawsuit by a different name, because the conditions were that bad. And without somebody making improvements to them on their own volition, we would have been in the same place we are now, just later.
That's what I feel, that I really struggle with, is that there's almost no way to avoid it. It's disgusting that we are forced with this choice. But I don't see an alternative. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation with option 1A, to incorporate both frameworks, with a definitive embrace of both frameworks, and direct staff to come back to us with the options that you described in the staff report.
Second. Yeah, the motion is second. I have Supervisor Kennedy in the queue. Maybe you want to speak to the motion?
No, I actually want a clarification from Amanda, because I hope my colleagues don't think that, you know, I don't understand the argument of the future expense. I do. And, you know, Cherry, I feel. But I do also want to be clear, though, that the bond indebtedness that we potentially could be taking on, it's not as if we're throwing it on top of the current situation. It's that, I mean, our indebtedness is going to go down when we would start, you know, having this requirement. I mean, could you explain that?
Yes, yeah. Thanks for the question. So, as I think I talked a little bit about yesterday, and I realize that this is like my fourth time at the microphone, and I've neglected to introduce myself every single time. So I'm Amanda Thomas, the Chief Fiscal Officer. And I think when a similar question came up yesterday, I mentioned that the county does have existing debt in the form of both pension obligation bonds and certificates of participation. And, you know, significant portion of that debt is currently repaid with general fund discretionary resources. That debt will be rolling off over the next several years. There would be the opportunity to structure new debt such that there wouldn't be a net increase in debt, debt service repaid with general fund resources. So we're estimating, in total, about 56 million repaid with general fund discretionary resources today that would go away over the next several years.
And I think that's important, because frankly, I couldn't, just as when we had the discussion with the UC Davis settlement, that played a large role into our decision then because of, you know, the way that our CFO structured it. I feel the same way. I could not, with good conscience, go, you know, support this if it was just, you know, we're taking $50 million off the top of what we're currently doing. But that's not the case. We're, you know, we're making up for it by that indebtedness coming off. So, I just wanted to get that position out there. And that's, I'm not looking to change anybody's mind, I just wanted to explain my position.
Patrick. Okay, Phil.
Thank you. As to that last point, I totally understand that. And as I had mentioned yesterday, it's the opportunity cost involved. So, yeah, you might have a one-for-one swap of the debt that you're paying on for something different over the course of years. But it doesn't negate the fact that it still has an impact on the general fund. And quite frankly, there have been some on this dais that almost every single budget season we're deliberating has emphasized the fact that we need to bolster our reserves. And so, that's just one example of where the money could otherwise go. So, to me, it's an expensive option. I get it. It's, has a lot to do with the type of construction. I get it. But, you know, I'm not going to be able to support the motion as pres- I'm not going to be able to support the motion as presented. I would ask the maker of the motion whether or not he'd be amenable to bifurcating the, the motion into frameworks one and two.
Okay. Fair question.
Yeah, I would. And I, can I, let me ask you just indulge, Rick, would that impact anything in your opinion in terms of, I mean, say we take up framework one and two as two separate motions, that's your thought?
No, I don't think that procedural matters.
For how you get to decision.
Okay. So we'll come back to, we do have a motion, we'll come back to that in just a moment. So I think Supervisor Frost, question?
I think this, this whole requirement to improve the conditions of the jails came at the heels of legislation that passed a decade or two ago. Am I correct?
Well, if you're referring to AB 109 Supervisor, that absolutely had an impact. I would say the Great Recession had an impact as staffing was reduced. But then also the fact that construction was 30 years ago on the main jail and even longer on the RCCC. All of those play a factor in how we got to this point.
And, and so I just wanted, you know, I think it is important that we do have forward thinking regarding, there were some conversations around, by the time we actually improve our jail, it'll already be outdated again because the future needs could potentially, you know, population increases and so forth. And I do think it's important to, you know, set aside, you know, to plan for the future and include non-carceral programs in that planning for the future to, to figure out how we can, you know, realign, you know, our system so that we can reduce the jail population in a, in a, in a logical way, but at the same time improve the conditions in our jails. So I, I just wanted to underscore the importance of reserves and planning forward as we're working our way through this.
Supervisor Serna, again?
Yeah, thank you. This will be my, my last comment before we get to a vote here. But I certainly didn't want to just leave my comments where they were without thanking staff. I think everyone from Eric to Rick to Amanda to Siobhan and Ann and others, RPD, Jeff Gassway up in the chief seats there, David, I think when we asked you to dig deeper in terms of really exhausting what opportunities we realistically have or not, and specifically to Rick's role in this in terms of assessing the risk, I think you've done everything we've asked you to do. And so I think you're to be commended for fulfilling that request. I want to thank you. As it relates to risk, I guess I join my colleague Supervisor Nativi in terms of maybe not being as, I don't want to say as concerned, I'm certainly concerned. But what we're being asked to really consider with 1A under framework two is really balanced on the fulcrum of ifs and coulds. And it's just an extraordinary decision to make based on that. It's a very uncomfortable position. It goes without saying to be forced into a half billion dollar decision because there's a gun to your head. And I, you know, agree with, with Don. My tenure is not nearly as lengthy as his here, but this is definitely for me, one of the more difficult decisions, if not the most difficult decision since I've had the good fortune of serving here. And I've given it a great deal of thought. I too didn't sleep well and got to bed around four. So, and it's because of, you know, hearing what I heard yesterday. That's our job is to listen carefully. But it's also our job to apply our own conscience. To me, that's really the fundamental, you know, obligation of an elected person is to marry your conscience with carefully listening to your constituents. And of course, I had constituents in these chambers on both sides of the specific issue of investing in an additional facility next to the, to the jail. I think unfortunately, we kind of evolved into the extremes on both sides, which I think is somewhat unfortunate. But I, I know it's also a product of the passion on both sides. In terms of the jail itself, you know, I think that perhaps 30 years ago, for different reasons, maybe it made sense to the then board and the city council to continue to limit the site selection for a jail to where it is across the street from these chambers. I think today it's a different situation. It's been noted a number of times that 25 different agencies use that facility in Sacramento County. I think, I think the facility is not just outdated clearly. I think the location is outdated. I think it's quite frankly, a terrible place for a main jail in our central business district for a lot of different reasons. I don't think it's necessarily fair. But, you know, I just felt that I should mention that as it relates to the fact that if 1A is the will of this board, you can pretty much guarantee that that's going to cement literally and figuratively that jail being located in downtown Sacramento for decades. So I think that too has to be something that we have to be honest with ourselves about because that will have, I think, dramatic continued implications for the health of downtown Sacramento in a lot of different respects. So I want to thank maker of the motion, my colleague Supervisor Desmond, for being willing to bifurcate the motion because I do think there is a great deal of value for the various initiatives and programs that Mr. Jones listed and spoke to yesterday under framework number one. And I think that regardless of the kind of the sub-debate about facilities, I think most of us can agree that there's a dire need to pursue those initiatives and programs. So that's why I ask for us to look at, look at the two frameworks differently in terms of a vote. So again, I'd like to thank everyone that showed up en masse yesterday to speak to this board. I'm not sure, Madam Clerk, what the total count was, but I'm going to guess it's about 150 people total, phone and in person.
I'm aware about that, yeah.
Yeah. So, and again, you know, there were folks on both sides, I think from probably all five districts, I'm sure. And, you know, I, again, I think it's unfortunate that there was some last minute tactics that I certainly do not agree with in terms of, you know, the hyperbole and some of the fear that was struck 11th hour and folks that drove their testimony or their interest in submitting in writing what those concerns are when I think there were many of them, quite frankly, with all due respect misplaced because this is really not, at least in my estimation, a debate about, you know, flooding the streets with folks that are intending to do us harm. This is really the other side of that. This is really about how best to ensure the safety of both populations, those that are incarcerated and those that are not. So with that, Ms. Chair, I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you.
Phil, Patrick?
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. I think that's one thing the five of us can agree on. I, this goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway. And that's, is that should it go forward that the bifurcated motion and the facilities aspect of it were to go forward, I assume, Ms. Edwards, that, you know, staff and even through our contract lobbyists will do everything we can to try to get money out of the state, be it, I mean, SB 90 or anything else, if there's any opportunity, or even new grant funding, that we'll be turning over every rock to do that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And can I mention, yeah, that obviously we are not the only county that was sued under a very similar theory. And I think that should be the first place to start, reaching out to these other counties who are going to be in the same position we're in to try to join forces and maybe try, you know, pressure the state legislature to help us out with these capital improvements or any portion thereof if this does move forward. Thank you.
If I could, we'll go back to the maker of the motion this moment. I want to say too, that we are going to have two distinct motions on, on the different frameworks here. That, just to complete one thought that I did when I was speaking earlier, that I think that, you know, looking at, you know, repurposing, rededicating space within the existing jail, recognizing how antiquated maybe it is, but, you know, part of the interim plan is to make some improvements out at RCCC that would provide the ability then to make some additional improvements on the Third West wing of the, of the jail related to mental health and health facilities, again, on a more, much more limited basis, as I understand it, than what's being proposed with the full facility. And I, again, if I wasn't clear, I, you know, I think that the booking loop needed to, needs to be improved and that you could look to either the existing facility itself. I know there was some discussion about what the future of the courtrooms might be and so forth. But even, you know, at the outside, if you needed to add that, but I think going up two stories cements the future of the downtown main jail. And, you know, it certainly allows for more space and more services, but you still have an old jail that is on a, you know, a framework, it sits on a foundation, it's a tower, two towers in the downtown. And I just wanted to note, yesterday there was discussion by a couple of the members that, you know, there was going to be funding set aside. I don't remember the funding, but that that bark lot was going to be the actual potential for a third jail tower and that, you know, where the old, where the law library was at one time there, that the speculation that that might, building might, even if it's a historic nature, might be removed and there'd be a fourth tower. Well, neither three or four ever came to pass, although we're talking about something that would add to the jail on, on that current location. But I just, again, you know, not that certainly any of us has all the answers, but I think if you're going to invest $450 million, that when I heard the discussion from Siobhan and Ryan about what's being done with, but the needs in the subacute arena, and we are doing something, we're bringing beds and so forth, that you could take another 100 or 150 million or $200 million and build additional capacity and then cement to that the staffing support that again, that I believe is, will get called into question over time, called into question when times really get tough because it, they just do. And, and so it would seem to me that we could look to do some of those things and repurpose some of that. And again, if you have successful, successful in the sense that you don't bring harm to the community, but reduce the population over time. And I will just say, having represented the area where RCCC sits over the years and a number of improvements, improvements going, you know, have certainly improved some of the housing capacity and, and other things out there. Yeah, it lies in a flood plain. It doesn't flood every year. And, you know, it had to be evacuated twice. But, you know, as to facilities out of RCCC, which has a much less dense on 140 acres, and certainly if one was going to be incarcerated, you know, if I had given a choice, that's where I'd want to be. And hopefully I never have to make that choice. Or it won't be a choice made for me. But, but, so again, that's setting. And again, we've worked, and I want to say this because it's part of what I will leave behind, is that we've worked with the neighbors out there to, to provide the assurances that it's a secure facility, but it is also, you know, has access for families and for others. And again, I want to commend certainly the Sheriff's Department during COVID, it was very difficult allowing, you know, visitations and so forth, as it was in the downtown jail. But that's a much better setting for, if you're trying to help people transition out of the system once they're in. And I would encourage looking at that versus just building more downtown. So anyway, with that, I'm going to-
Can I comment on that?
Yes, you can.
And I-
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with that. A lot of discussions we've had, I mean, it's always occurred to me that RCCC, if we could add a health services facility there, it would be better. But I'm led to believe, I mean, I guess I turn to Rick, because I, obviously if we, if we could, there's, it's always been the flood issue in a flood plain that almost makes it a non-starter. Because I think, you know, making the improvements to the booking loop, obviously the ADA improvements at the main jail, but if we could do the, the health services facility at RCCC, I mean, I agree with you. But can you comment on the, I mean, if we were to try to accomplish this, knowing where it's located and the other logistical challenges, what would that do in terms of, I guess, the cost and other logistical challenges that we face?
So certainly the location of the facility is a big driver of why RCCC is not a viable option or not the best option. But also the fact that the booking loop is now downtown means that everyone goes through that central point. And that's where most of the services, medical and mental health are, because that's the touch point for all the people that come into the system. If we moved a medical mental health facility out to RCCC without taking a booking loop out there as well, then you're duplicating services at both locations. So it would be, it would not be as staff efficient as having it in one central location. If you moved the booking loop and the medical mental health services, then you're taking that central booking loop and making it remote, I know remote is relative, but you're making it remote from some of the highest users of the booking loop, the Sacramento County, or Sacramento Police Department, the various patrols of the Sheriff's Department, certainly making it closer to others like El Grove, but-
Galt, Isleton.
Galt and Isleton, yes. But they're relatively smaller users, utilizers of the booking loop than those other entities.
And I understand, but I mean, to Supervisor Serna's point, that's not necessarily a bad thing to move it out there. Have we done some comparable cost estimates on, I mean, would RCCC, apart from those other challenges or issues you just mentioned, what would the cost difference be? Do we know?
Well, you would have two construction projects if you wanted to still build the booking loop downtown. So you would have two separate construction projects, the booking loop downtown-
No, say we move the booking loop altogether.
Oh, you move the booking-
And obviously you'd have to make the ADA improvements at the main jail.
Can I just add, can I just add the question of pre-trial, downtown is pre-trial, awaiting trial. So it's logical to have something downtown for that reason also.
Okay, go ahead.
Eric Baden, it's Knox and Lewis.
Eric, good.
I think option 1B, which is the option to build two facilities, one being the medical component with the booking loop downtown and the mental health facility at RCCC, that cost is really what we're talking about. If you, if you build both of those at RCCC, it would be about that cost. So I think that was 605 million.
Yeah, 605 million.
Yeah.
And we used to do booking there. I mean, it was probably more limited, but, you know, there was a time when we booked and actually some of the arraignments, because the way the municipal courts were, were actually done in the South County. You know, that's changed obviously with the courts and with more centralized services downtown and the need to have certain other services available versus just booking someone. So, but that's 605 million, Eric? Is that what you're saying? Is that the-
That's, that's correct.
Well, and the other thing that I'll just add is that if that becomes the, the alternative, basically the services that we have now at the main jail shift to RCCC, then you're going to have a population that is going to be farther away from the population center of the county. So their families are going to have farther to go with no real, certainly not a light rail connection to them, to get to them. And that means it's going to be more difficult to get back to probably where a majority of them came from, whether it's the sheriff doing transport or some other entity doing released transport. And of course, to Supervisor Frost's point, we certainly have a new courthouse coming up that I don't think they contemplated doing arraignments down at RCCC with that building.
Thanks, Eric. Ann?
I just want to go back a little bit to something you said Supervisor Nativi. You were talking about-
were talking about the, some of the ADA and HIPAA projects. I want to make it clear that those are included in framework two. So all of the construction, so the, the work within the main jail and at RCCC that we're contemplating in addition to the, the new building, all of that is included in framework two. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that as you vote.
Right. And I think that's part of the reason I was saying, I didn't say it specifically. I appreciate you calling it out, that I support those things, but I don't support the, the apportionment that goes to the two stories that would be added to the booking loop facility at the, at the ground floor. So, so I realize if I cast a vote that, then it goes against all that. But again, I've said clearly before that the money ought to be, we set aside 10 million plus, you know, two years ago. And we took a step back. You know, as far as I was concerned, you could have started that a long time ago. So-
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just that last point that Ms. Edwards mentioned, I just want to make clear that the motion, I believe from the motion maker is, framework, we'll, we'll treat framework one separately. When we get this, the vote on framework two, it's going to be specific to 1A so that it's clear that, I think, well Supervisor Nativi and I have the same opinion about the import, about the HIPAA and the ADA separate from the expansion, the multi-story expansion. That makes sense?
But I, but I'm not sure. I think to Anne's point, the way it's been divided out even under 1A.
Yes, you were talking about voting on the one and two.
Right.
And within two is 1A, I should probably be having Eric describe this, but it's 1A, but it also includes the projects at the main jail and at RCCC in addition to-
Those interim measures.
Those interim measures.
The 14.1 million.
Then I think it's just a matter of structuring the, the motion.
Yes.
Language appropriately.
So you're asking, so measure, so the first, and I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, the, the first motion being framework one plus the interim measures, correct?
Yes.
Right. And then, and then motion number two would be-
Perfect.
1A, correct?
Yes.
And I'm fine with that. What I'm-
Sorry, motion number two would be, could you?
Proceeding with, with 1A, option 1A for the intake and health services facility.
Yeah.
Side of it.
Okay.
So, so the first motion would be to incorporate framework one, which is the 15 steps for alternatives and diversionary programs in addition to the interim measures, which are focused more about ADA access, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. So we had a pre-existing motion and a second on that. So it sounded like the, the maker of the motion, you know, the secondary. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and restate the motion and then we'll withdraw the, and I'd see-
Jeff Gasway, Director of General Services. I just want to make it clear that we still are in the planning process for the ADA improvements in the existing main jail that hasn't been on hold. We're still working on that and coming up with that plan. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And that's not included, that's already been funded, right?
There's 10 million set aside for the planning and some of the construction, but that's not going to cover all of it, no.
And so what, where will it be covered? Is it going to be covered with the motion that we're going to be contemplating here?
No, that's in addition to the, the motion.
Okay, so that'll be coming back at another time?
Yes.
And just on that point then, and maybe it is, I appreciate your clarification. I do think, Anne, when you come forward with this, and you talked to it yesterday, you know, cost benefit analysis takes different forms and formats. But I think there needs to be, because this is going to be ongoing. It will be, there will be multiple years of which certain things will be milestones achieved, certain programs put in place. I think it would be served this, this board, and certainly the community and, you know, all of our successors potentially well, to have some sort of a tracking mechanism for, both on the staffing and support side, but also on the facilities and the, because otherwise, again, you know, you have a collective knowledge here, you have it in the room, it's documented in some of the formatting here. But this is, this is a long-term commitment. And I think the cost benefit analysis regarding that, but also then the efficacy of the programs, but be able to track this. Because again, if you're going to be coming back, I mean, like I say, well, you already said on, you know, December 8th that you were going to do that. Well, no, that's going to come afterwards. And, and so I just, again, I would ask my colleagues who are going to, you know, be here after I'm gone, if you think that's a good idea. I just, I, I ask you, Anne, do you think that's a good, having a matrix that allows folks to track this?
We can certainly work to create something like that, yes.
And I think that it gets attached when you bring things forward in the future so that you know, you get a reference, point of reference as a board member. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff, for that clarification. All right. So I'll go back to Mr. Desmond, who's contemplating a different motion.
So I'll, I'll just, so I'll make the, my first motion is to approve staff recommendation for framework one, which is the 15 outlined alternative and diversionary programs, and the interim measures as outlined by staff, which amount to, I think, those are the ADA elements that amount to approximately 14.1 million dollars to fund. Is that adequate?
Yeah.
Lisa, okay, then.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. It's been moved to second. That's, okay. All right. Anything further? If not, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a second motion to approve staff recommendation to proceed with constructing intake and health services facility under option 1A with the explicit direction to staff to incorporate to this, I mean, obviously you're going to be coming back to us with options. But just, I guess, making it a, a note that it's the expectation that this would come back on, on a regular basis to this board to retain very high level of engagement, both by the board and, and provide transparency information to the public, and to identify opportunities for those, those touches along the way, because there will be several over the course of this project. That would be my second motion.
All right.
Second.
All right, just move to second. Nothing further, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna and Nativi voting no.
Okay. With that, I think there's sufficient direction. And there's nothing further on this item. And that is the one item for today, yesterday and today. And with that, Anne, any comments you had?
No, I just want to say thank you. I know this was a very, very difficult decision for all of you. It's been very difficult for staff as well. And so thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Board members, any comments? Hopefully get a little more rest. And thank you to all of our staff. Everybody's been with us. Thank you to members of the audience. And with that, nothing further. We'll next, come back in the session next week. We have two days, is that correct?
Yes.
And that'll be the end for the calendar year. And then Mr. Desmond can run the meetings after that. All right. With that, we stand in German. Thank you very much.